L'adiegenes to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward Nebraska governing body, the city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall, actually is in the by the door of the facility as required. Disclosure of the recording process is also posted here in the meeting room. A participant's signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. If you'd like to speak any item, just indicate that you would like to speak and we will call on you at that time. We will limit your remarks to five minutes. All remarks will be directed to the mayor, shall determine by whom any appropriate response should be made. And the city should reserve the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Beck?
Here.
Hendrick?
Here.
Camper?
Here.
Singleton?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Holderman? President?
Wilkins?
All present?
Alright, first item this evening is the draft minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty. Move to approve. The motion is second, is made for discussion. Saying none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Alright, the next three items make up our consent agenda for this evening. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, is made for discussion. Saying none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkins? Here.
Alright, next we have the appointment of Kevin Sagehorn to the LBA forty Sales Tax Application Review Board for Economic Development for the remainder of a three-year term.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, is made for discussion. Saying none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Alright, our first public hearing this evening is the presentation and discussion of function and progress of the Seward Economic Development Plan. Greg?
Yes, approximately every six months by statute, the Citizen Advisory Review Committee, the CRC, gets together. And they review all the activities and the work of the LBA forty committee. And so we did have that meeting back in September. We did have a forum. The meeting was conducted by City Finance Director Nick Wolfe. And so we reviewed the activities stretching from February first through July thirty-first, twenty twenty of this past year. The significant items that we reviewed and looked at all the financials for were probably related, one to the payment for geotechnical services to SFD Opco LLC, which is PetSource. That was our largest LBA forty item that went out this past year. And then the other large one was the time promotion that was worked through LBA forty. And that was our response to the COVID pandemic. And working with different businesses and SECDP to provide a one-to-three match, is what it kind of was sold as. And so for every dollar gift certificate that's sold by a eligible business, it was matched by the funds from LBA forty and the Seward Foundation for Seward County. And so the Legacy Fund. And so we went over all those, provided all the lists of all the participating businesses and talked them through that project. Updated on some refinances that took place in some different projects for, I think, not Fullfield Ag, Bigot Hybrids, Ben Benson. And then just kind of went through those. Again, this, other than the time promotion, it was kind of a quiet year or six-month period for the LBA forty committee. And so they reviewed all those things with Nick and didn't have any specific notes or anything to pass on and to verify the numbers that submitted. I can answer any questions about the LBA forty program or the review by the CRC.
Any questions or comments, Greg? What are you thinking about that? It is a public hearing, so I will go with the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone in the public wishes to comment on item number one, please indicate. Now, see one? I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Do any of the councilors have any other questions or comments on this item?
Move to approve the report.
All second.
Motion is second, is made for discussion. Saying none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
We're going to skip over number two at this time and go to number three, public hearing, also seven P.M. This is ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Seward, rezone certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Seward from Ag Agricultural District to R-two urban residential moderate density district south of Bluff Road and east of Concordia University. Tim, did you want to?
This is a rezone application by Adam Greenquist on Bluff Road east of Concordia. He is wanting to put up an additional garage on his property. And with the current setbacks and zoning that he has, he cannot meet the requirements he needs. So looking around his property, we realize that most of that out there is zone R-two with the exception of a couple of properties, his being one of them and Tom G. being another. So Adam requested that, or asked if we could possibly rezone that to meet his setback so he could do his building. Well, the R-two extends to the northwest of him. Tom G.'s property is predominantly R-two with the exception of where his residence sits, which is agriculture. And then Adam Greenquist is agriculture as well. So the hesitation we had was spot zoning because Adam would be the only R-two not contiguous with the current R-two that's out there. Well, when Thomas G. stepped forward and said, hey, I'll rezone mine R-two, he solved that issue for us. With that, the planning commission recommended that we go ahead and zone R-two for Adam Greenquist.
Thank you. Yes, Greg?
And I just know for the record, we have received that application.
And paid.
And paid for the, so that rezoning is coming down the pipeline with Tom G. as well. So that it wasn't just false words, it really is action coming down as well.
Yep.
Any questions or comments from the council? It is also a public hearing, so I will go with the public comment portion of the public hearing for item number three. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this item at this time? No, you're good, alright. I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any other questions or comments on item number three? Otherwise, I need someone to introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to rezone certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Seward, Nebraska, now zone Ag Agricultural District to R-two urban residential moderate density district, specifically tracks of land south of Bluff Road and east of Concordia College. To describe the property rezoned, to provide for publication of this ordinance in formal form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by a title that is designated as ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Any motion to suspension, statutory rule? Second. Motion is second, is made for discussion. Saying none, please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted as read?
Hold on a minute.
Second. Motion is second, is made for discussion.
Just one thing.
Yes.
Do we need to have, say, Concordia University in there, or is the legal description still say Concordia College?
This is.
The legal description doesn't say any of those. It's just a, it's like a directional for the purposes of public notice, trying to give them.
I just didn't know that.
Legal is all.
The legal is all meets and bounds.
Alright. So the question, is ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three be finally passed and adopted? We have this, we have a second one. Okay. So please call the roll.
Beck?
Yes.
Hendrick?
Yes.
Camper?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Holderman?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Next, item number four is also a public hearing. This is discussion on text amendment to the city of Seward Unified Land Development Ordinance, Article forty, circulation system design. Greg, do you want to start?
I'll give you a little leadoff on this one. Notice it's a discussion on a text amendment. And so ultimately, from your feedback today, we'll be able to draft up, because it's a substantial text amendment, we'll be able to draft up the final changes that an ordinance for official consideration will come at the next meeting. When we were looking at what will be probably public hearing number two in relation to subdivision agreement, it was noted by zoning director Tim Dorek and also city engineer Mike Onaby that there were some inconsistencies in regards to the cart path requirements that we have. And generally, what the cart path requirements are is when we set up to design roadways, whether they be gravel, asphalt, curb and gutter, concrete, whatever they may be, the ULDO calls out certain widths based on traffic, use, all kinds of different parameters that are included in the tables that you'll see included in the packet. They were kind of inconsistent, and they were also inconsistent to what we predominantly saw in almost all the other jurisdictions at this point. And so we felt we were getting a lot of pushback from developers who were saying, your residential ones are too big, your commercial ones are technically too small. Whatever it may be, we were always having this conversation. It was one of the predominant items during subdivision work that we were always going back and forth with developers on in both directions. And so we had a deep analysis done by Sarah and the team over at the Building Inspections Office. And from that, Tim and Mike generated their recommendations. Mike, I think, is going to walk you through a little bit more depth on that. And then from that discussion, we'll bring you back a text amendment based on your general feeling. And then we'll be able to put that together because if you change anything in the table, it changes a bunch of text. And it will, if you change it two feet, it makes a big difference in the text, and so we would have to completely rewrite it. We couldn't do it on the fly with you here and then have it done. So I'll turn it over to Mike, unless you have any questions for me, and then he'll kind of walk you through from there.
So, good evening. So there's three tables included in your packet, tables forty-eight, forty-nine, and forty-C. Table forty-eight is predominantly definitions of the different variety of street types that we have. There were some missing definitions. We've added cul-de-sac and boulevard to this, in frontage to this definition. We've also added minimum design speeds. These are somewhat critical in terms of roadway design, in terms of the horizontal curves, ability, and vertical curves, ability of drivers to see pedestrians and bicycle traffic and other cars as they travel. So this also, we had established there, ADT is average daily traffic. So the first table forty-eight is mostly setting definitions for the rest of the tables in this, in this section of the ULDO. Tables forty-B and forty-C are design standards predominantly. We have created both a urban and a rural definition for different uses, which are residential, industrial, commercial, and agricultural as well, and define those separately. And there's reasons why each of those need set definitions. A little definition, a little description detail on the rural is, for instance, a urban industrial cartway street would be thirty-two feet minimum, back of curb to back of curb. The rural would be twenty-eight feet. Four-foot difference allows the addition of two standard two-foot curbs to be added in the future if that were ever incorporated. So these apply to rural development within the ETJ. So there are others in table forty-C. There's some very esoteric design standards, minimum moving lane width as an example, the horizontal curb radius, the site distance on vertical curves, the slope of the roads, and the thickness of the pavement. What we wanted to do is standardize it, so there's a balance between all three tables. There's a balance between safety, usability of the public, but also in terms of the economy. You can't, obviously, it'd be nice to have very, very wide roads and very large radii to work with for site distances, but then that drives the cost up. So we think this is the best balance, and then we'll create clarity for future development within the city.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the council? This is a public hearing, so I will go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone in the public wishes to comment on item number four. Saying no one wishing to comment, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'll give you some more clarification, and I'll make you ask some more questions. One of the big differentiations here that was causing us an issue before, again, it will be related to one of our other items, not directly. What you do in vote here has no impact on that, what they're going to ask for in this other agreement. But for instance, the Twin Oaks area that we'll discuss tonight, we used to refer to it as the Linder property, so it is west of Pine Street, kind of back behind, oh, there's our guest, back behind Mobile Home Park. That's an area that's entirely incorporated within to this, the city, it's annexed, I believe, right?
Correct.
But some of the lane widths we had there for some of the work that was going on was allowing for a twenty-eight-foot roadway path or cart path under the old system. And so we recognized that anything else that we had normally within the city under the new standards would put that at pretty much a thirty-two at minimum base, especially in an industrial, commercial setting. And so that's some of the give and take. So now, when we have an agreement like we do with Mr. Linder on that property, it's a twenty-eight-foot gravel roadway established. When we come back to put in the new road, when it is finalized as concrete, we need thirty-two. Those extra two feet on each side, four feet total, are now going to have a completely different base on the edges, which is almost the most critical portion of the roadway sometimes, where your curb and gutter goes, your storm sewer and everything else. And so we're moving from these different ones because they did not align correctly within the city itself. It makes sense in real, truly rural districts outside the scope of the city. I would argue that, you know, with what we did with Mr. Greenquist tonight, with all of that R-two out there now, you would develop that as residential or urban roadways, not residential rural roadways anymore. And the reason for is to prepare for that growth. And so you have areas inside your city that were not building in the proper order with the proper economy, and it's causing us issues, and we recognize it. It's nothing specific that was involved in the agreement that we'll talk about on Twin Oaks, but it was something that was recognized through that process, and we said, we got to stop doing this. We're just causing ourselves problems. We need to unify these standards and make them make sense inside and then outside the city. So that's how we put it together. I would say that Mr. Linder's subdivision was one of the catalysts for looking at this and finally going, yeah, we need to clarify this and clean it up.
Questions or comments from the council?
I would assume Greg and Mike, since you guys are kind of the experts in Tim on this, that whatever you come back with to recommend, it's what we'll, you know, look at.
Okay.
Sounds like you're on top of it to make it make the most sense and not complicate things going forward.
And I won't put Jake on the spot, but this is something we noted, other than it was something we had to deal with during subdivisioning for. The note I made, Jake, was that every single subdivision we did, even while you were here and since I've been here, this cartway width issue has always been a discussion point. It has never not come up amongst all the other ULDO stuff we have, whether the cartway width seemed too wide for what is, you know, a local residential neighborhood or way too narrow for what will ultimately be a commercial industrial area with truck traffic and everything else. Just some of those things, as you know with the ULDO, it just kind of becomes a hodgepodge over time, and you have to take whole sections of it and clean it back up, unify it, and put it back together for something that kind of, that works again. So this is kind of the tipping point that we got to, and Tim and Mike chased that down, so.
Some of the other reasons over the years why we went wider is because our ladder truck and our fire apparatus, a twenty-foot road, twenty-eight-foot road wouldn't fit. So that's why some of it was, is because of emergency vehicles.
But again, like I said, in town now, everything in town is, I mean, the minimum on there, other than a private lane or court, which we don't see too terribly much, if we stay away from PUDs for residential development, we might be alright on that, is thirty-two. And so we're really getting that minimum in-town width that we want codifying it, sticking with it, and then understanding that the rural is agricultural, rural residential's out, way out in the city. Because you can see what you did tonight with that rezoning. We continue to extend our boundaries in regards to zoning and the transition that's coming, especially out east. That's a substantial amount of residential zoning east of the city now.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Mike, and this is the recommendation, so this is the way it sits right now, if I'm looking at it.
Well, these are the recommendations. So there are a few differences. There's probably less than, certainly ten to fifteen percent changes, I would say, in tables.
Derek, I mean, with the conversation we just had, there still is a twenty-eight on a curbed residential floor.
Twenty-eight on a, yes, that is correct.
Yep.
And so certainly for residential roads, to give you the best example maybe everybody's familiar with is East Hillcrest along Concordia, where there's frequently two lanes of traffic and one lane solid parking. That is thirty feet curb to curb. So we're discussing twenty-eight feet and probably in a residential area. We won't have solid parking on one side, we'll have scattered parking. And so there'd be a little bit of meandering if there's a definite amount of parking. But we consider that twenty-eight for residential adequate. It is minimum, and certainly developers would say that if we want residential development, that we need something on the order of twenty-eight and not thirty-two. When it becomes industrial, commercial, then of course thirty-two, we'd see that in a couple of examples where that can get pretty tight with truck traffic.
The other thing I want to bring up though is for the emergency apparatus, say like Pinewood during the Fourth of July, and you get parking on both sides of the street?
Correct.
We're touching mirror to mirror with the rescue squad. When you get a nine-one-one call that's an emergency, it's tough. So we've got to make sure we keep that in the back of our mind, if there's somewhere where there's potential for heavier traffic and parking, that we do make sure we have enough room or we're going to have to go parking on one side versus the other.
Any other questions or comments, or are you comfortable with the direction?
The other one you're going to see is also is, we need to really hedge down and look at design on some of these subdivisions. Because we have one coming in that some of us have looked at already, that is in its initial stages, that you'll see come up for a TIP application that's probably a month or so down the line, but it's been turned in. It's very obvious by looking at the design of the subdivision that you're going to need way more than a local through it because of the routes that they take and how they connect to the other streets in the system and the number of units that are in there. And so you just take the number of vehicles, standard one residential home, minimum of two vehicles, sometimes three. You get a hundred homes, you're hitting a lot of vehicle traffic on one road. And so it bumps it up very quickly out of some of those scales. So those are the things that we're going to consider and look at and really go at in trying to make recommendation, recommendation on design.
Any other? Chris?
Well, I was just looking at this guy, going through the tables again, and somewhere I thought I had, you know, when you're talking about the fact on table one versus speed limits and average daily traffic, you know, your, your street design standards don't have anything in there related to the number of homes and the number of vehicles that might be in there. To Greg's point that he just made, I mean, I come in as a developer, this guy developed and he was able to do a twenty-eight width, but you're making me do a thirty-two or whatever, you know, is there something that needs to be in the standard that is in relation to?
Traffic.
Traffic.
Well, there is the ADT, average daily traffic, there is an inch, it's engineering calculation to determine that number. And that number basically is related to the number of households or businesses and how many, so obviously, a commercial business will, will have a lot more, you know, so a residence might just have two people leaving and returning twice a day, as an example, maybe three times a day for a trip to a grocery store, things like that. There is a calculation for that, so that's why that's in.
Is there a calculation for, say, businesses that are already in place and then we make some new development there? Because like Hillcrest is horrible. You know, we got more development there because of Concordia. And if you have a car parked on one side of the street, you can't hardly make meet two cars.
Correct. So that, I mentioned, that's thirty, thirty feet, that's under redesign, so the East Hillcrest portion from East Ridge to the Plum Creek Ridge this fall. And then the next year would be design of the rest of Hillcrest from East Ridge to Sixth Street. And those will all be length.
What is it from Columbia to, say, East Ridge?
It's thirty feet.
Because that, I mean, that's.
And so, so that's projected, so projected to be thirty-eight feet. Now, that street happens to be categorized on arterial. So you go to the first page, and the definition will be a minor arterial, and then the arterials are thirty-eight feet width. So Pinewood is, and I don't, there's, there's a map that we have, it's included in the Seward Comprehensive Plan, but it defines what are collector streets and what are arterials. And that will be the tool that we have a map of. So if Pinewood is the collector's second street, whatever we select as the, or have been selected as collectors for these specific purposes, then have different width categories. So as an example, the collector will be thirty-two feet at a minimum, back of curb to back of curb. Whereas a local will be most of the rest of the residential streets will, for future development, will have a twenty-eight foot back of curb to back of curb.
So with Katon's new development, the apartment complex, you got side streets. So what are we going to do there with the added traffic in? So what are we figuring there?
The, are we referring to the?
To the south.
Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
Lincoln. Lincoln?
The corner of Lincoln and, Lincoln and Columbia, there is a new apartment.
Yes, correct. Well, those streets and widths are established already.
I know, but I'm just saying, are we figuring that in because it's already prior?
Well, that's difficult to change. Obviously, if, when we redid Columbia, we just did an overlay, so we did not change back to curb to back to curb. And south of Lincoln, that street narrows considerably from the portion north. Obviously, we're going to have, there are streets built at different ages, there's different right-of-way widths. There's, there's trees in the right-of-way in certain areas that are not in others. And it's all effect, life site and all these factors. We can't rebuild the city.
I know, but my point is, is, you know, we're bringing in new development.
Correct.
In an older development area, so how are we figuring that in for our streets because it isn't made for?
You have to work with what's there.
I know.
Right. So I think, I think this particular section of circulation design is really for the new development going forward. And obviously, as the opportunity rises, so East, East Hillcrest is an example, and Hillcrest in Columbia to East Ridge, right, and then from East Ridge out, that should all be thirty-eight feet at that point in time. So that's the plan, that, so that section we're just discussing next to Concordia would widen by eight feet, as an example. Pinewood is also a project in the next couple of years up for redesign. It may have adequate, we haven't taken a look at that.
As a city, we're also not held hostage in the sense that we can always go back and change parking on how parking is allowed if we need additional width depending on the number of cars that are passing through an area or limiting parking on one side of the street or, you know, so there are, there are, you know, options available as you move forward with the older parts of town that are already established. But this will at least give us a little bit more consistency moving forward so that we can tell the developers the same thing, and we don't have to have a arm wrestling match every time a developer wants to come in and doesn't. and we don't have to have a arm wrestling match every time a developer wants to come in and doesn't like how wide the streets are.
Is there any questions or comments? This is not an item to take action on, other than to give some sort of direction on whether you're comfortable with the discussion and having something you brought back in the future. Alan, did you want to add something?
Just to ask clarification, did you just say you had plans to widen Hillcrest from, from Columbia up through Concordia to thirty-eight feet?
We don't have plans yet, so it's just preliminary design at this point in time. But certainly taking measurements and obviously how that width develops, we don't, we don't, we don't yet know. We need discussions with Concordia. Obviously, they're an important partner in that. And then, of course, we have to figure out where that extra width is coming from. So there's a lot more work to be done. It is, it is indeed designated a minor arterial, and by this current table, we would set that width at thirty-eight feet. Given an existing road, just what I'm trying to say is the ideal would be thirty-eight. There may be other limitations which restrict that. So we'll, we'll have to, as we go through that design, we'll have to address each of those issues as they come up.
They'll be tight. Okay, thanks.
The other one to note on Hillcrest, and we'll get into it when you guys go through the whole design phase and a lot of discussions, is you're also doing substantial utility work at that time. And so this is probably your one shot at making whatever change you want to Hillcrest because of the amount of different utilities. We're not going to come back in five years and put in a whole new water main under this roadway. It's all getting done on probably one project. And so electric is probably even under consideration, which is one of actually the biggest issues in looking at the width, is all those substantial amount of overhead utility that runs along the south side. So everything's on the table.
Any other questions or comments on item number four, or are we, are we good with moving on?
You're good.
You're good? All right. You want to go back to number two now?
Yep.
All right. So we skip over to number two, we'll return to it at this time, it's a public hearing. This is a major subdivision agreement amendment for Twin Oaks Development, seven addition. Greg, do you want to start that off, or Tim?
I can.
I'll let Tim start.
The current subdivision agreement calls for Spruce and Walnut to be built as a gravel road to twenty-eight foot for access for individuals that need access back to do their building. And what, at such a time that the sewer, that the city paves Pine Street the north-south, then the developer is responsible for paving both Spruce and Walnut to thirty-two foot. During the discussions on this, the developer wants to satisfy his agreement end of it. He wants to be done and he wants to move on. So what he has proposed is that they do a twenty-eight-foot gravel road per the agreement and then wishes to buy out the remainder of the agreement for the paving at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Well, Mike ought to be looking at, City Engineer ought to be looking at it, realize that we need to be thirty-two-foot gravel roads per all this street design that we're looking at. So he went through, refigured the calculations on it and came back and said, we really need to pay, or gravel them at thirty-two feet, both Spruce and Walnut. And then they're ready for thirty-two-foot pavement once Pine is paved. Well, his estimate comes back at two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars to pave both Spruce and Walnut. So the planning commission recommended that we go ahead and we say, okay, you guys put the gravel road in at thirty-two foot, which is four foot wider than they proposed, and you pay us out for two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars to satisfy your end of the agreement. With that, we noted that since we're requiring them to do thirty-two foot instead of twenty-eight foot, that's a ten-thousand-dollar additional cost. So we would credit them the ten-thousand dollars. Also noted was their plan called for two-inch of gravel. We require six-inch per these new regulations, which is a cost of twenty-thousand dollars. So with that, we would credit Twin Oaks back thirty-thousand dollars, leaving a difference of a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So the planning commission says, go ahead, they recommend, go ahead, do the thirty-two-foot gravel roads, pay us a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and that will satisfy your agreement. And that was their recommendation.
This is a public hearing, so I'll go up, open up the public comment portion of the public hearing at this time. Does anyone in the public wish to comment on item number two? Welcome.
Good evening. So Tim did a really good job of just kind of explaining kind of where things are at. Developer just wants to kind of put this behind him and get the, you know, his obligation paid with the city. So it's been good suggestion by the city to have this option out there, so developer would appreciate if the city would agree to such thing.
Anyone else in the public wish to comment on this item? Do you want to say anything?
Can you, can you identify who you are and who you're with?
Jake Basha with S D H.
On behalf of the developer?
On behalf of the developer.
Thank you.
Who's the developer?
Roger Lee.
Anyone else wish to comment on this item from the public? See, yes.
And I just note, I think it's just to, Roger kind of has a good idea here in regards to just wrapping this one up so there's not something to chase down later. And so I don't know from the administrative standpoint, we may have, if we don't build this right away, but the payment came in, we take the risk of the added cost, concrete goes up, things like that. But it does eliminate us chasing this down five years from now, which may be to our benefit. So I don't know that we're of any major concern. So that's our standpoint from the administration.
Now go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Does the council have any questions or comments on item number two?
I have a question for Greg.
Yes, sir.
And/or, Ryan? Are you guys concerned at all about setting any kind of precedent here? I'm sure this is probably something that we've done with developers in the past.
It's actually odd. It's because we don't develop a lot off of gravel. Pine Street's the problem. Pine Street's an established road, it's developed on both sides. Mr. Lidner has lots on it now, we had done some TIP. And so in, in growing it, when we had these growing pains, when we had the subdivision come in before to add the property that ultimately I think Mr. Matsky owns, this was kind of new territory. So we tend not to grow and develop and subdivide near gravel roadways. And so that's where the meat in the middle came from, the road. And looking at concreting later, rather than going, hey, like all our other subdivisions, just concrete it. But then we have a concrete road going to a gravel road again. And so we tried to find something in the middle that would work over time, but kind of put the obligation where we'd normally do it with subdivisions. And I, I don't mean to speak for Roger, but I think he's just on the mindset, I just want to wrap this up. I just want to be done with it so it's all set, it isn't a bother anymore, and everyone involved can move on. And when things happen, things happen and everybody is settled, so.
Any other questions or comments? Do you just require a simple motion?
Now, we can move to amend pursuant to the recommendations by Tim as stated and provide that.
So move.
All right.
Do the motion in a second, there's a discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
May I ask?
Yes.
Andrew?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Singleton?
Yes.
No one?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Calderman?
Yes.
Welkin?
Yes.
Morgan Herring?
Thanks, guys. Next, we have administrative item number one, ordinance amending the municipal code initiating electric rate adjustment, increasing total system revenue by three percent effective with the October twenty-twenty billing. This will be the second reading. Ordinance to amend sections two thirty-seven dash three-point-one through two thirty-seven dash three-point-one-three of the municipal code to initiate an electric rate adjustment that will increase total system revenues generated by rates charged to customers for services from the electric distribution system of the city by three percent effective with the October twenty-twenty billing. To provide for billing thereof, to repeal the original sections two thirty-seven dash three-point-one through two thirty-seven dash three-point-one-three, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. This is just the second reading, so the council is welcome to discuss this item. However, if we wish to take a vote, we would first need to have a vote to suspend the statutory requirement of three readings. That's where we are with this item. So any questions or comments from the council?
I'll make a comment. The reason why I voted no last time is we had our housing study. And I have young children that are going to be just starting out on their own and buying houses and possibly having a family. But when they first have to go and get a loan, say, for two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, where the kind of the study came in. But then on top of that, if you have a loan payment at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand and then you're paying utilities, that's almost as much as your house payment, I don't know how young generation can afford it. And I know if you're living in an apartment, or if you're renting or anything, you're not, you know, you're not getting the full, you know, as far as tax base and that. And that's why I brought it, you know, if we're going to keep rising, raising our utilities, whether it's water or electricity, we need to bring something back to our citizens, especially our younger generation that's going to be, you know, coming about here and looking at sewer that, you know, more, making it more appealing for them to want to live here. Because I can, I had multiple people come up to me after I voted no. And I have one gentleman that's putting in a gas furnace now because he's paying utilities almost seven-hundred dollars a month. So if you had a loan payment, say, seven-hundred dollars on top of that, and paying fourteen-hundred dollars a month, I don't know how our younger generation can afford it, and I know it. And I had another gal come up to me and says her utilities are four-hundred-and-eighty dollars a month. And then you put a loan payment on top of that? And that's what I'm saying. So we need to do something to bring something that's, you know, put in a star on the sewer that, you know, it's affordable living here, but we're not. And I know we got, we got a wind dying, we got one. And to me, that's kind of a slap in the face, you know? And, you know, maybe we need to be more, a little more conscious on our, you know, when we choose, you know, our power services and that, and our, and our services in the future to make it affordable. And that's why, I just wanted to bring that out. And I had multiple calls thanking me for voting no. So I just want to put that out there because, you know, our, our children, you know, a lot of us are older here and we're developed. Yeah, we can chew that all off, but you get a young family, you know, I hate to see a young family fail. And with our rates and a, and a home loan on top of it, you know, people are going to start going to smaller towns where they can afford to live. Just throwing that out there.
Chris?
Yeah, so I had actually spoke with John and Kalissa after the last meeting. You know, we, we had a discussion during budget time and we probably needed to discuss it more then during the budget, before we approved the budget. You know, utilities unfortunately are what, are what they are at this point in time. We're not budgeting to make a profit in our utilities, we're budgeting to cover operating expenses and to keep the electricity on, keep the water flowing. So had a discussion with Greg also, and Greg kind of threw it out there and I told him I thought it was a really good idea. You know, we always start talking about these things when budget time rolls around and we need to talk about them earlier. So Greg kind of threw out the March timeframe, and whether it's the Budget Finance Committee or if it's a subcommittee of other council members to take a hard look at electric. What are we doing there? What can we do different? Is there anything we can do different to make changes and keep rates more affordable? We'll be six months in approximately, did not Pet Source turn up this week full-scale?
Yeah, in October it did. I was just answering questions for N M P P today about Pet Source. And again, we still don't know how high those utility bills will get. But I gave them all of the algorithms and information that we prepared for the budget. And they went and independently verified it today with all the data they have. And they said that our estimate for that was about right on for what they would have guessed. In being conservative, looking at power purchase only and things like that. I just, the reason I made that recommendation to Chris was, is I look at your budget process for the last three years at least that I've done it with you. And to make a deep dive, to really get into it, you can't do it in a few weeks, a week, a month. The council to really be in-depth with it, or at least a subcommittee of you, you will need like six months of just deep dive, kind of sitting with the administration, answering all your questions, and then you going into things and us providing you the information, going and getting you the information and bringing it back to the subcommittee throughout the budget process, all the way from March or earlier on. And so that you understand when we do make those recommendations to you, or the auditors do, or the study groups that study these independent of us, when they're making that recommendation, every stone is flipped over. And you understand what is looked at, what goes into it, what is the formulas. And you get to kind of have your hands in it and see it like we do a lot. Because no matter how many meetings I have with you in a month's time or anything else, I can impart years' worth of information onto you in a very short amount of time. So that's the kind of depth you'll need to get into to understand it. If you want to do the deep dive, I think some of you want to do, looking at some of the comments that like Councilman Singleton has, talking about renewables, talk, whatever it may be, fully understanding some of these contractual obligations you have with N M P P and N P P D, with Blue Stem Energy on, on the renewables that we operate now. And so I think that would be something that either the Finance Committee or any other subcommittee could, could tackle, but that's the kind of timeframe that I need, so.
I think we need to get back to that. When we're talking with John, John, John brought up all the green energy and everything else. And I don't, I don't know if all of the council understands, we're maxed out on our green energy with the one mill we have. So from our standpoint, we, we think, let's do more of that, let's do more of that. And I think everybody here would be in favor of something of that, but, but contractually we can't. We are currently at our max on that.
And the other thing that, you know, would be nice for us, like when, you know, I first built our new house on Evergreen, when we moved from Second Street to Evergreen, and one of the things that, you know, was influenced was going all electric. You got an incentive. And now, it is, now it's like getting a slap in the face if you're all electric, you know? Because the power keeps getting more and more and it's cheaper to go gas versus electric. So I'm just saying, you know, we need to do the deeper dive to see if there's anything out there, you know, that we can bring back to our citizens for incentives. Is there anything out there? You know, is there grants? Is there anything that the city can go for that, or a new homeowner, you know, that they can get an incentive, you know, for utilities? Is there something out there? I mean, we just got to do a better job, you know, as far as making it appealing and affordable living.
In support of what?
I just, I agree with John and Chris, and, you know, I'd certainly be interested in participating in that. I know we have to, we have to have a level to support our needs and to support any potential need should we have a catastrophic event of some sort of any of the utilities. But I still do not have a good understanding of what that level is and why it is what it is. So, you know, it's something I'm interested in and, and I agree with John. And I think, you know, Chris, you might remember when we did the whole utility thing a few years back? We talked about this, about how it would limit our ability to do the, you know, the wind and all those other alternative energy. And yet we did it and we locked ourselves into a pretty long-term contract. And, you know, I think back is, is that, is that a good idea? So, you know, I'm absolutely open to looking at all of that and I agree with John, so we should do something.
But just to be clear, our options are fairly limited. We've had, you know, when, when the council re-upped the N P P D contract, that pretty much limited what we could do in the future with renewables. I think the wind turbine put us about one-point-seven, one-point-eight-ish, and I think our max is around two. And so there's a little bit of a room there for additional renewables. But, you know, when we brought, when the administration brought that.
And so there's a little bit of, of room there for additional renewables, but, you know, when we brought, when the administration brought that forward to the council to, to not re-up with NPPD and to go on the market, that was an opportunity for substantial savings of millions of dollars. And not locking us into NPPD as their only provider, we could have gone on the market and bought renewables or even had additional renewables built for the city. So just, you know, I know this comes up every year, and every year I hear from some council members, you know, bring us options, bring us options, we want other alternatives. Well, the reality is we did try that, and we didn't go, we didn't get anywhere with it. And with, you know, a lot of this is based on markets that we have no control over either. There were years where NPPD hit us with nearly double-digit increases in electricity. We don't have a say in that, we can't tell them no. So what did we do? All we could do was not pass along that entire increase. So there have been years where it went up ten percent, we only maybe increased it by four or five percent, we ate the difference. So we've been trying to, you know, minimize the impact, because to John's point, if you're already paying a substantial electric bill and also you get hit with a ten percent increase that you weren't expecting or budgeting for, I mean, that puts any family in a tight spot. And so just, you know, we are trying to figure out ways that we can address that, but we can't, we can't just propose it. We need, you know, the council to also consider and ideally pass some of these things to give us more options in the future. So with that said, um
You know, shame on us, because, you know, hopefully in the future, you know, Greg's doing a great job, but hopefully he guides us, you know, when we get into these situations in the future, so we don't make a bad decision. Or he, you know, they, you guys explain it to us in more detail, so we make a right decision. You know, you, it's bad because, you know, like now with COVID-19, you can't, you can't fly because, so you get to drive across the states, and you see all this renewable energy, the solar, the wind dines, and, you know, and, and then some of the gases, the, you know, that shame on us, you know, because we didn't do our due diligence. And in the future, we need to do our due diligence.
John, remember back though, we did a study, when we considered that whole big long contract we get the mayor's talking about, we did a study, we had that looked at as to what our options were. And at the time, I
It was a gamble.
Why did we decide, what was our, I'm trying to remember what our reason was for going with the NPPD again, was it too risky or?
They were kind of telling us that the market could be low then, and then it could, then it could spike up and be more than what NPPD was.
And that's true, but, you know, we didn't take the chance, so.
And that's where, hopefully in the future, you know, we work together as a team and, you know, we need to do what's right for our citizens, you know? Take a gamble.
The other benefit of, like, the wind turbine, for example, I mean, there is the going green, you know, as you mentioned, but also we can, we know what our rates are going to be for the length of that contract. We know what we're going to be paying, it, it reduces that uncertainty, even though it's not a large percentage of our use. We know what that rate is going to be every year until that contract's up. That's something that helps the administration from a budgeting standpoint, because, you know, right now, there has been excess energy on the market, which is why we have